Westmont Official Voting Board Meeting for April 5, 2010. I'd like to have our clerk, please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zeminek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Bureau Chief Trout? Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item are the minutes of the committee. The whole meeting held March 11th and board meeting held March 15th, as corrected by our clerk.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Reports. The mayor, I have nothing at this time. Our village clerk?
The only thing I have is to wish our village attorney a happy birthday because I know his birthday is the end of this week.
Oh, happy birthday!
We hope you have a very happy birthday.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zeminek.
Uh, nothing, thanks.
And Searle, village manager.
Just several announcements. As we had previously mentioned, there's going to be a joint meeting with the Park Board this coming Thursday, April 8th at 6:00 PM over the Westmont Park District Administrative Offices, and I passed out a copy of the agenda for that. Also, just a public reminder on the upcoming budget workshops are scheduled for April 12th at 7 o'clock here. That's next Monday, as well as the second meeting. The second firm budget workshop is Wednesday, April 21st. I mean, there's an alternative, optional, I should say, budget workshop potentially for April 22nd. Then I wanted to, again, remind residents to respond if they have not yet to the census survey that's been sent out. There is a website that I think Trustee Klebeneau mentioned last Thursday that tracks the participation rate, and our rate keeps growing. We're at 64 percent of 60 when I looked this morning. Our rate for the 2010 census was 78 percent. So, you know, at least, I hope we can at least match that percentage. So if you have that and you haven't returned it yet, please do so. And then the last thing I had was to announce, and I passed out to the board a press release, a partnership with DuPage County and a new vendor called Creative Recycling bringing back the electronics recycling program. The first event will be Friday, May 14th, same location. It's up at the southwest corner of Blackhawk Drive and Plaza Drive. One difference will be the hours. We're gonna run it this year from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The materials, as I understand it, are basically the same as what they collected in the past. This will be a monthly program, the second Friday of each month, and we'll have more information available on our website. And that is all I have.
Anything else on the census? I'd just like to make a comment, and I think when I filled out the census form, when you first open the envelope and look at it, it looks a little intimidating, I think. But if you just spend a few minutes looking at it, it's actually much easier to complete than it looks at first glance. So don't let that stop you from filling out the form and mailing it in, because it is really quite simple compared to the forms that they've used in the past. Okay, is that it, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. New business. 2010 Red, White &amp; Barbecue at Ty Warner Park. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from the Westmont Lions Club and J.C.'s to waive the required $100 per day fee for the temporary liquor license needed for the 2010 Red, White &amp; Barbecue to be held at Ty Warner Park, Friday, 4 to 10:00 PM, May 28th, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM, May 29th, and Sunday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM on May 30th. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Hearing no. Discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
St. Jude Children's Research Hospital DVD. Board to consider a motion to approve airing on Channel 16 a St. Jude Children's Research Hospital informational DVD promoting the Race to the Flag 5K race on May 30th, 2010, to benefit St. Jude.
Motion to approve, Forsley?
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Next item, 2010 Taste of Westmont. A board to consider a single ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corporation, WSEC, for the 2010 Taste of Westmont to be held July 8, 9, 10, and 11. Number one, carnival fee waiver. Number two, liquor license fee waiver for two locations. Number three, sound live entertainment request for July 8, 9, 10, and 11 during event hours. Noise ordinance waiver consideration throughout duration of event. Number four, public street and parking lot closures. Number five, approval of geographic description and related issues. Number six, permission to use portable temporary ATMs at the event and related fee waiver. And B, board to consider a single ordinance granting permission to openly transport alcohol throughout the defined 2010 Taste of Westmont geographic area. Do we have a motion on point A?
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion on point A.
Just the, the only comment is, again, we want to thank everybody on the committee. You're trying to be creative. I gotta be honest, I'm not totally for moving the carnival over to that area, but I'm willing to give it a try, because you've tried so hard to come up with ways to expand and, you know, the only way we're gonna know is if it works, just make sure we check with all the neighbors and we make sure everything's fine and they know that if there's any problems. And same thing with moving, you know, that other alcohol thing. Again, I'm not totally 100 percent for it. Again, you continue to try to improve it and make suggestions, and I think I'm willing to give it a shot and see how it works this year. And if it doesn't, we adjust next year, you know, or during the taste if we have to. So we appreciate all that you do.
If I just ask that on that carnival site on Lincoln, if there is a problem, just shut it down. I would appreciate that. And also try to, you know, maybe later in the evening, bring the noise down a little bit. Or just bring the noise down, so. Okay.
I'm not in favor of the ride being in that lot. I've had some time to think of it over the weekend. I look at several things. Number one, you have to remember that Lincoln is your southbound traffic lane coming off of Naperville Road to get around the fest. You put that ride in that parking lot, I guarantee you're gonna have moms and dads stopping to drop the kids off. You're gonna have more pedestrian traffic. So the only way to really resolve that is you're gonna have to go over to Grant Street, another block over, to run them south on that street, because I really think you're gonna have a traffic issue on Lincoln. And I also still believe that the alley is gonna be used as a public thoroughfare. I know that you can do whatever, but I guarantee you it's gonna happen. I'm not opposed to them coming up with ways to do this, but I'm looking at some of the potential things that may come out of it. Now, as far as the second beer tent goes, or the second beer stand, even if it's for three hours, you're gonna serve it in plastic bottles, okay, that's fine. But what's gonna stop people from going out, or our local establishments going out and purchasing this product and selling it so that people can go out on the street with it? I guess I don't understand, I wouldn't have so much of a problem with a second beer location. If you do what you do at like parties or whatever, go get yourself some large tubs, fill them with ice, and put the kegs in and put a tapper on it. If it's only for three hours, I mean, it, you know, how much difference could that make?
Could you do that?
It's a thought. They just can't get a beer truck. They can't, do not have a second one available. So that's why we came up with the plastic bottles. However, we could do the case. We get case. So we could tap the cage and we do the happy time.
I mean, I'm just saying it's only for three, you're talking approximately three hours.
Right.
And I think you'd be able to get enough ice and
Make more money.
Large enough container, yeah, you're gonna get more draws out of that than you will out of the bottles anyway. So, I mean, if you're looking for money.
We can do that.
You know, but I mean, the other one, I
I kind of agree with Mark on the carnival. You know, at first glance, I think, gee, maybe that's not such a good idea, but I think if we remain cognizant of all of the things that could happen and know that if some of these things happen, we may have to, you know, we may have it Friday night and not Saturday and Sunday, depending on what happens. But we don't know until we try. And, you know, these are tough times, and you're looking for added revenue, and I think it's worth trying. And if we don't bring it back next year, then we don't. But as long as we remain very aware of all of the things that could happen, traffic being one of them, you know, we just have to watch that and be very cognizant of it.
If the board wants the ride, the traffic needs to be moved to Grant.
I think that's a good suggestion.
You can't, you can't use Lincoln. I know that it's only in that one spot, but I guarantee ya what's gonna happen. You're gonna have more people walking around in that area, especially out on Irving. And if you have Lincoln as your southbound trafficway, that's gonna pose a problem, because people are gonna drop kids off. They're gonna pick people up.
Yeah, I don't think that's our decision. I think we need to defer to the police and to Steve May on what would work. Because we can't have Lincoln two-way, it just won't work.
No, I know, Lincoln's gonna have to be closed.
Well, what do you do with people that live there? I mean, that's not, you know
You'll allow them to get through, just like the road construction.
The problem that I see is if you have a carnival ride that takes up the size of that parking lot, in addition to people, you know, wanting to drop off and pick up there and all of that, whenever you have carnival rides, you always see these kids get so worked up and they start running, and you're gonna have dart outs. And I think, you know, I too have thought about it, and I agree with the let's try it, but I don't agree with having traffic right there on Lincoln next to a big carnival ride. I think it's dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other thing is that, I mean, I'm not opposed to trying new things, but if we're gonna try new things, we need to, and it's our responsibility, and a lot of people have said it, that we have to see to it that it's a safety issue too, that that problem is taken care of from the get-go. Now, that being said, if the ride goes in that lot, then the lot down at Burlington and Cass needs to be some type of a valet lot, not just for business use only. You need to have somebody there. I think the Downtown Business Alliance, I talked to a couple of them, that they would be willing to talk to their customers that have appointments on those days, that they will give them something like if you go in to the hospital downtown or whatever, they'll stamp your parking pass. They'll stamp that, they won't have to pay for the valet. But anybody else that doesn't, set a charge on it of 20, 25 bucks, and say, put it in the parking fund for possible work, you know. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I honestly believe that that's the way it needs to be done, because otherwise, your businesses are gonna be in the same position that they were in before. They're not gonna have any, any way to do it. But the only way I can honestly say, and I, and the way I read this, is this is a yes/no vote on all these items at one time. Honestly, if, if the chief is here and, you know, we have to talk to Steve, I don't think Steve will have a problem with it. If we move the southbound traffic to Grant Street and somehow quadrant off that area, I don't have a problem with it, I'll try it. But with Lincoln being the main concourse going south, absolutely not.
Can we separate this out into separate votes, each line item?
Do you just wanna separate out?
I think it'd have to be four and five, right? Because it's
Or just delay it.
Be affected by this and the geographic.
Yeah.
Or just delay it pending input from, well, we've got the chief there for input right now, and then maybe Public Works.
Public Works Director Steve May and myself, along with our staff, sit and attend planning meetings with the WSEC. This, this topic did come up, and we did express our concerns, the same traffic concerns as, as Trustee Fleming mentioned. We also, I believe it's possible, and I won't speak for Director May, but I do believe he would be in favor of Grant Street as well. We did talk that option. It'd be similar to as we're doing now with Linden Avenue to the east. You have to go over to Warwick, Linden Avenue for parking, for the main reason is that we experienced a problem with the carnival rides and that curve on Burlington over by Yokohama. We experienced the same problem as what you're concerned is now. Cars were stopping in the middle, picking kids up, there was traffic obstructions, it was a safety issue. That's one of the reasons, not the main one, but it's one of the reasons why Director May moved from Linden to Warwick to move that problem, so there wouldn't be a traffic backup and go that way. I believe we could probably do to Grant Street, the only thing is you're moving further into, you're incurred in further into the residential area. We're doing it to the east, I would imagine, and then I won't get, I won't speak for Steve, but you can do it on the east, it's the same thing. We close the road off, leave it just for cars for parking there, on one side of the street only. And then you go to Grant Street for your main southbound traffic.
Would Friday be a problem on Grant Street with South School? Isn't it being used, and there's buses and things that come there? Or is that not being used anymore?
Usually the event doesn't start till like 5 or 6 o'clock.
But the street wouldn't close until later in the day anyway.
South, well, South School, I mean, South School is south of the track.
Oh, that's right, it's on the other side.
Right.
I mean, other side of the track.
Tracks, yeah, it's over here.
Good thought, though.
I like, Trustee.
I mean, I mean
I like what you're saying. I'm one of
Let me ask this. I mean, originally I said I was opposed to this new ride and this, and this beer tent thing. And what I'm saying is, if we can come to an agreement on this, I'll give it a shot. I mean, honestly, I mean, I'm not opposed to anyone trying to make up revenue. Not, I mean, especially with what we're looking at, okay? Alls I'm saying is, we just need to do a few more things to stretch this thing out a little bit.
Well, plus the factor, I mean, we're all, it's an unknown, but we're all trying to factor it in of additional attendance due to other fests not being there. So I think to reroute the traffic two blocks over on either side, definitely a safety issue that would benefit everybody.
And I think was mentioned the other day about having extra supervision in that area, one for the alley. One, I think we just need to have extra supervision by the ride, you know, just so people don't sneak by, drop off, or whatever the case may be, for safety. So there might, we might need a little, not, I'm not saying police
It, it could be EMA, but however, we're experiencing shortages of some volunteers in EMA. There's times, and I'll let Chief Trout explain on that, but there's times where you may not have enough volunteers for that as well.
So Chief, would you close Lincoln then from Irving south?
My recommendation, close Irving all the way from Naperville Road to Burlington Street.
Close the whole street?
Just as we do on Linden, yes. I mean, that would just be for parking over, because otherwise you're gonna have a zigzag around. It's gonna be too hard for the detour.
They'd be turning at that corner.
Just close all the roads off, it's easier to put those barricades up and put the detour signs up on, just exactly as we do on Linden and Warwick.
You think it'd be a good idea, as I think you were saying, Sue, to postpone those two till we get Steve's input?
Yeah.
I mean, not that we don't value yours, I don't wanna make it sound bad, but you said you talked about it. This is another idea that you hadn't talked about, maybe get Steve together, talk about it and
It's, it's easy for me to say, but I'm not the one who's gonna be out there having my personal out there putting the barricades out and the traffic flow plan. We talked about it, it was an option. However, there may, that was several months ago, so there may, things may have changed.
We have a Public Works meeting next Tuesday. I mean, we can talk about it in that Public Works meeting real quick.
Well, and then he comes to the next committee of the whole.
And then have it ready for the Committee of the Whole come Thursday.
Can we, can we table four and five and vote on the other ones? Because I don't know, do you have to get, let the bank know about whether you're gonna contract for the portable ATMs and other things that you wanna get rolling on? Yeah, so
Just take out the
Take out four and five, we postpone
I would make a motion to postpone items A4 and A5 pending, you know, discussion with Public Works, but vote on items A1 through 3, 6, and B.
Can you break that into a single motion to postpone for item 4A, 4 and 5?
4 and 5.
Then we can vote on that to postpone.
Yeah. Motion to postpone items A4 and 5.
Okay, so just those two?
Yeah.
There. Second.
Discussion?
Nope, it works.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll go back to
Go back to the original motion?
Vote on
Can I ask a question before we go any further on that? I'd like to know how many of the homeowners on Lincoln were polled, or were told what was gonna be happening with the carnival? From somebody from the
We need to ask permission for them to come to the May, we have permission for special events to come?
I actually can tell you, because I was there. They went to all the corner houses, it was a Sunday. We didn't have a lot of luck finding people home.
So we can pretty much say the majority of the people that live within a block in either direction do not know what's happening unless they're watching the meeting?
Right.
And I think maybe we should do as we did with, or used to do, I hope that they're still doing it with Oktoberfest, when we actually flyer doors and said, this is happening.
You're almost gonna wanna flyer the people on Grant Street's doors to let them know what's happening.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, those are still part of 4 and 5, so they're tabled till
So we can talk more about that at the Committee of the Whole.
But why, shouldn't we then let the neighboring community then know that at the next meeting, this is gonna be discussed, so we gotta get the information to them prior to the next meeting? Give them plenty of time, so if they wanna come in and express their concerns?
The good news is there's an empty lot directly south of this parking lot. The parking lot itself is pretty small. The church is directly to the west, and then of course you have the street. That one house is set back kind of far. So there's nothing like right next to it, but there's homes in that area, definitely, that should be advised.
Well, the one across the street is pretty close. I mean, you know, the street
Yeah, the one is, the other one isn't, but one is.
The one kitty-cornered, and both of them were okay with it, because they were home. The Arns were home, the Arns were home, and the Mushans were home.
And they were okay?
Both of them, yes.
And I mentioned to Sue, prior to the meeting, when we had the, when we have the events out here, I know they go down and they flyer Grant Street, and they, they let us know about the parking, and they let us know the carnival's gonna be here and all that, so it's the same thing. Prior to the, the vote or anything, just let people know, so if they have a problem, they can come in and talk to us.
Or if they have a question.
But that's something that's been going on for a while, though. This isn't something that's brand new to them.
Right, right. But I mean, the, the, I guess it's an unwritten policy, it's been done before, we just go ahead and do it here.
Yeah, informational flyers.
I think most people are understanding for a few days. But they don't like surprises either, so they need to be told.
If I could make the recommendation, if you're to survey, also serve all the residents on Grant Street, again, Lincoln and Grant from Naperville all the way down to Burlington Street. Grant Street will have their traffic and their parking affected, and I think they should also have a say so.
Yeah, they should know.
They should.
Good.
So who would be responsible to get that information out to them before the next meeting? Does that be, fall on the
Does that fall on WSEC?
And that's okay, that you'll have time? Thank you.
One more thing to do.
One more thing that you didn't plan on doing, huh? Thank you.
Okay, unless there are any further questions, we have a motion and a second.
A motion for A1, 2, and 3, 6, and B.
No.
No, not A. We didn't do B. B separate, I'm sorry.
1, 2, 3, and 6.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay.
And we've already had the motion for that?
We've got a motion and a second.
No further questions, roll call on point A.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Point B.
So moved. Wanna read it?
You read it once already.
Oh, okay. So moved, Seneca.
Second, Emery, only if, is this going to be, as we discussed, not plastic bottles, but glasses from kegs?
Right.
It works?
It works, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on point B? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
No.
Trustee Fleming?
No.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Next item, Cruisinights 2010. Board to consider a single ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corporation for the 2010 Cruisinights event. A geographic description for Cruisinights with parking restrictions as follows. Number one, restrict parking on Cass Avenue from the crosswalk north to Norfolk Street to accommodate classic car parking only, from 5:30 PM until 9:00 PM on each night of the event. Number two, restrict parking on Irving Street, east and west of Cass, to the alleys to accommodate classic car parking only, 5:30 to 9:00 PM each night of the event. Number three, restrict parking in the Cass and Irving parking lot next to Toons to accommodate classic car parking only, 6:00 to 9:00 PM on each night of the event. And number four, permission to close Irving Street from Cass to the alley west of Cass from 6:00 to 9:30 PM. And number B, permit for live music and/or DJ during all nights of the event from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We have a motion on point A.
And I'm sorry
I'm confused, there's two things with permission to close Irving Street from Cass to Alley. It's up in 2, under A, and then it's again by itself on
4.
4.
One's 5:30 to 9, and the other one's 6:00 to 9:30.
We had talked about postponing this pending if we could do it how we did it last year, and I think that Cruisinights could be done how it was last year, and I don't think it includes a lot of this stuff in here. So is it possible that the, it should be rewritten? Because there's a request for I thought we said we'd
Just to clarify Clerk Simmsky's point, the first point has to do with the parking on the street. The second point has to do with the street itself.
Can't have cars parked there and then close it, 'cause they'll
That's why it sounds simple.
Yeah, it's that overlap.
Okay, okay.
But I, I thought on Thursday, we kinda said leave everything the way it was last year, and then in addition to that, close Irving.
Yeah.
That's the way I kinda walked away from it. Pretty much what this is
Is that, and that's how it comes out? Okay.
Is that how it's written? I'm sorry, because I missed Thursday.
I think so.
Hope so.
Yeah, because we did Toons last year. Yeah.
Any other?
Okay, so it doesn't close Cass and it leaves
No closing of Cass.
Right. And it leaves the parking lot open down
On Burlington.
Burlington, okay. All right.
Other questions?
I need a motion.
Motion to approve, Emery?
And A and B can be taken together, I'm sorry, it's all written up.
Oh, A and B, oh, okay.
Motion to approve both A and B, Emery?
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, Manning School, board to consider motion authorizing the closing of the 200 block of North Linden Avenue to permit use of the street by Manning School for their annual field day. Activity is on May 17th, from 8:30 to 2:30 PM with a rain date of May 19th, 2010.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
5:20 North Cass, First Midwest Bank, board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance to increase the number of signs from one to two.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Absolutely, yes.
Illinois Fire Safety Alliance, Fill the Boot for Burn Camp. Board to consider motion approving fire department participation in the IFASA Fill the Boot for Burn Camp program at major intersections along Cass and Ogden Avenues, May 4th, 5th, and 6th, 2010.
So moved, Seneca.
Second Emory, uh, question. Um, are you gonna do it at, um, Cass and 55th too, or just Cass and Ogden? Because they've always been out at Cass and 55th.
We had different locations, 63rd and Cass was another one, in which we were at Cass and Ogden, Naperville and Cass. And, um, you know, depending upon the, uh, the personnel which we have on duty, you know, the weather and things like that.
Okay, I just read this wrong. It's major intersections along Cass and Ogden, meaning independently.
Right.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
We're having reading problems.
You can rest now, Chief. After spending all those hours assisting and fighting that fire over in Downers Grove. He's, he's due for a long nap. Thank you. So where are we? We've got a motion and a second.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, if there are no further questions, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Intergovernmental agreement, board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between multiple fire agencies concerning a fire service communication network.
So moved, Emory.
Second Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Proclamation, board to consider motion accepting a proclamation declaring April 11th through April 17th as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Westmont.
So moved, Emory.
Second Scott. Discussion?
Were you gonna read it? You said on Thursday you were gonna read it. Sorry about that. Put you on the spot.
If I can find it. See, I marked it in here. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 11th through April 17th, 2010. Whereas an emergency can occur at any time requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas the safety of our police and fire personnel are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Westmont 911 Communication Center, and whereas problems of crime, fire, and other disasters touch and affect all segments of our society, and if left unabated, can undermine and erode both the moral and economic strength, strengths of our community, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters while monitoring their activities by computer and radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the village of Westmont have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, William Ron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the village of Westmont, do hereby proclaim April 11th to the 17th, 2010 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In the village of Westmont, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our village and its residents safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, declaration of village property as surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring vehicles received through police seizures as surplus village property.
Motion to approve, Klebanow.
Second Emory.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Code of Ethics update, board to consider an ordinance approving an update in section 2-538, definitions, ethics officer of the Village of Westmont's Code of Ethics.
So moved, Emory.
Second Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Resolution, board to consider a resolution opposing the governor's proposed reduction of local government distributive fund revenues.
Motion to approve, Scott. Second Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.